Good afternoon, Board members.
Good afternoon.
And college staff and guests. The time is six o'clock on this, the 30th day of September 2021, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Delgado, can you lead us in prayer, please?
Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, and for our faculty, our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Thank you. Judge, will you lead us in the pledge?
A pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, reliving its justice forever.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
I call Mrs. Ramos for the roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge J. Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Cynthia Mahrez? Absent. Mercurio Martinez?
Present.
Junior.
Thank you.
Dr. Henry Carranza?
Present.
Esteban Rangel? Absent. Karina Elizondo?
Karina, are you there? She was going to be calling in.
Absent for right now, right?
Yes.
Tita Cantuvella? Absent. Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. The next item we have is approval of the Minutes for Budget Workshop and Special Board of Directors Meeting, August 19, 2021, regular board meeting on August 26, and Special Board Meeting of September 14. Do I have a motion? Shall move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Ramos, I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? Non-heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public testimony? Do we have any public testimony? No? Thank you. Next item is recognition, communication, introductions of personnel, and new personnel actions for the month. The first item is 5A, Laredo College 75th Anniversary Recognition, Lupita Cepeda. And I'm just going to go over several of the recognitions that we have received last week and the week before. The first one, the city of Laredo gave us a proclamation. The mayor, Pete Sines, declared the 75-year anniversary for Laredo College. This is one. The next recognition that we received at the board meeting, Laredo Independent School District congratulates Laredo College on their 75th anniversary. Laredo ISD further recognizes Laredo College for their many recent achievements and for the partnership established over the years with LISD, which has benefited the students of South Texas. This was done September 16, 2021. The next that we received was a Congressional Certificate of Recognition. The certificate is presented to Laredo College in honor of the 75th years in which Laredo College has served our community in educating generations of our students. Laredo College has been a pillar to Laredo youth, which has led to the college being recognized as the best community college in the state two years in a row. Laredo College continues dedication and commitment to educating our community, has never wavered and hasn't gone unnoticed. Signed on the 14th day of September 2021, Henrik Guayar, U.S. Congressman of the 28th District of Texas. And the other one that we have, on behalf of the Senate of the state of Texas, this certificate is a Texas flag presented to Laredo College celebrating their 75th anniversary by Senator Judy Safrini, Ph.D., was flown above the state capital of the sovereign state of Texas on September 11, 2021. In witness thereof and pursuant to the authority vested in me, I have hereby set my hand an official seal of office at Austin, Texas, this, the 14th day of September, attests Judy Safrini, State Senator, District 21. Kudos to everybody. Thank you for that. Next item we have is 5B, 2021 Hispanic Serving Institution, HSI, STEM and Articulation Program, Title III, Part F, Program Grant, Dr. Nora Garza.
Good evening, Board members. President Tijerina, everyone present. For the record, I am Dr. Nora Garza, Vice President for Resource Development and External Affairs. In the 75th year of the college's history and legacy, it is my honor and pleasure to advise you of the U.S. Department of Education Title III STEM Articulation Grant Award in the amount of $5 million. Our congressman plans to join us Monday to award us a symbolic check for that amount. As I understand it, will be at around 11:00 in the morning in the Falcon Room.
Correct.
I ask you to please be present if you can. It will be a momentous occasion. The grant is Leadership Excellence in Academic Preparation in STEM, which we call LEAPs, Power, which stands for Promoting Optimal Wellness and Emotional Resilience, to increase the number of Hispanics and low-income students who attain a degree in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and math, and increase the number of articulations with universities. This is our third Title III grant, having been awarded in the first round in 2011, the second round in 2016, and now this one. Each time, the number of possible applicants has increased exponentially to now over 500 institutions in the country. So the competition is getting stiffer and stiffer every year, every five years, excuse me. 183 proposals were reviewed this time, and 92 were awarded. Laredo College is one of 17 in Texas. The award supports four components to address the goals and objectives. One, academic and student services, articulation agreements, affordable paths to knowledge and skills, and promoting optimal wellness and emotional resilience. The target population is 100 students, majoring in STEM per year. It also brings a staff, academic tutors, research mentors, and working with the high schools. LEAPs Power will increase the number of Hispanics and students, and low-income students who attain degrees in STEM, and the Model Articulation Agreements between Laredo College, Texas A&amp;M University Kingsville, Texas A&amp;M International University, University of Texas Rio Grande Valley, Texas State University, and the University of Texas, San Antonio. Kingsville was the only A&amp;M system school awarded, Kingsville. So we look forward to seeing you there on Monday at 11:00 in the Falcon Room, and we are just absolutely thrilled because we have many students who started in 2011, who already graduated, are working in STEM, and some of them are working on their master's degrees and beyond. So we're very, very happy. This is in the span of 10 past years, the number of students who have been very, very successful. So thank you very much, and I think we have another presentation.
Great, congratulations. Let me just recognize, we have Karina Elizondo that just joined our meeting a few minutes ago via phone. Ms. Elizondo, are you there?
Where?
Hello.
I don't see her.
And I'd like to recognize Ms. Cynthia Mahrez joined us as well.
Thank you. Apologies.
Okay, the next one is 5C, Fiscal Year 2021 Citizenship and Integration Grant Program, Dr. Nora Garza and Ms. Sandra Cortez.
Thank you very much, again, Dr. Nora Garza. For the record, Sandra Cortez could not be with us this evening, but Mr. Gabe Lozano and one of the people from her area are here tonight. We're very thrilled with this grant. It is from Homeland Security, and it is for citizenship. So Mr. Gabe Lozano will give us more details, as well as introducing Mr. Wyo Martinez.
Yes. Yes.
You join me.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Gabriel Lozano, a grant writer here at the college. My pleasure to announce this grant from the Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $250,000, and it's a citizenship and integration grant. And real fast, the goal of the Citizenship and Integration Grant Program is to expand the availability of high-quality citizenship preparation services for lawful permanent residents across the nation, and to provide opportunities for lawful permanent residents to gain the knowledge and skills necessary to integrate into the fabric of American society. And here with us is Mr. Wyo Martinez, and he spearheaded this initiative along with Sandra Cortez, who I don't think is here tonight, but it was a good team effort, and we're very happy to announce this grant.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next one, we have the Economic Development Center, EDC, Universal Primary UP Skills Workforce Readiness Initiative Grant, Dr. Nora Garza. You're surprised, yes?
I don't have the details for that one. I think it's one that's pending, I'm not sure. Rather, if you give the wrong information, I'd rather.
Okay.
You want to make a motion to defer?
I'd like to have a motion to defer. Shall move.
Second.
I have a first from Mrs. Ramos, and I have a second from Dr. Carranza. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to defer 5D.
For another?
For another meeting.
Correct? Yes.
Okay. 5E is Emergency Medical Services Grant, Dr. Nora Garza.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
David Arizola, interim provost, for the record.
Yes, sir.
5E will also be deferred.
Okay, so.
So shall move on?
So I have a motion by Ms. Ramos, still have a second by Mr. Delgado.
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to defer 5E as well. 5F is Introduction of Personnel, Personnelic Actions. Dr. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina will be presented by Dr. David Arizola.
Madam Chair, members of the board, it gives me my pleasure to announce new employee hires, promotions, and reassignments. Some of them are here today, so I'll pause to have them recognized. First of all, I have Mr. Carmelino Castillo, he's the Director of Digital Student Life Next, we have Holly A. Dykstra. She is now the Assistant Professor of English and Writing Center Director, and will now be serving as our interim English Department Chair. Tracy Humphries, she is now Vocational Nursing Instructor and Nursing Assistant Program Director.
What kind for her?
Next, we have Ardean Ramirez, Associate Professor of Associate Degree Nursing Program. Bright De Jesus is our new Biology Instructor. Alberto Chavez Jr. is our new Senior Director of Information Technology. Jessica Sisneros is now our Instructor/Transitions Coordinator. Alberto Hernandez is now our Associate Dean of Dual Enrollment. Danya Herrera is our new Faculty Secretary for the Emergency Medical Services. Andrea Lopez is now our Associate Dean of Enrollment Management and Student Success. Rosalina Montemayor is our new Vocational Nursing Instructor. Omero Paes is our new Construction Project Manager. Gabriela Ramos is our Assistant Director of Advising, Career, and Transfer Center. Noemi Casiano is our new Faculty Secretary for Allied Health. Claudia del Bosque is now our new Associate Degree Nursing Instructor. Marcela Sanchez is our new Accounting Clerk. Sergio Palacios is our new Journeyman Electrician at the South Campus. Dr. Mariza Guerrero Longoria is our new Director of Bachelor of Applied Science and Organizational And last, we have a special guest here today who, just a few days ago, wouldn't be a guest, right? But she is today. We want to present Ms. Adriara Nunnamaker, who was our former Dean of the South Campus, with a little token of our appreciation for her 15 years of service here at the college, 15 years of excellent service here at the college. So I know she's here today, so Ms. Nunnamaker, will you please come up?
We can, we can do a picture with her before we continue our meeting. But congratulations, everybody, our new, welcome to Laredo College, our new members that are joining our team. Everybody that has been here with us as well, congratulations. Welcome to our team, and I wish you all the very best. I would like to do another round of applause for our grant writer, Mr. Lozano, Mr. Martinez, Dr. Nora Garza, and her team for bringing all that money to Laredo College. Much appreciated. If we can take a picture with Mrs. Nunnamaker, I already missed her at the South Campus. And we wish you the very best, Mrs. Nunnamaker. I know you're going to do an outstanding job at UT. We appreciate all your hard-earned years here at Laredo College, and we all wish you the very best. I didn't know you wanted to say anything on your behalf.
If I may, thank you. Adriana Nunnamaker, for the record, it is truly an honor for me to receive this acknowledgement. My time here at Laredo College has been a wonderful experience, because I've had so many wonderful experiences, and I can't name the best one, because they've all been really well, and they've all been well-received. My experiences here have prepared me for my new challenge, and my new challenge is to be the Executive Director for the University of Texas Education and Research Center at Laredo, which is the former UT Health Science Center, San Antonio Regional Campus. I look forward to the new challenges that come with that, because one of the things that I'm excited about and so passionate about is that we're focusing on education, and we're focusing on healthcare, and we're focusing on bringing these programs that will help this city, this county, because we are severely underserved with healthcare professionals. And so I look forward to our continued collaboration with Laredo College, and the TAMIU and any other schools that want to join, the collaboration of making Laredo very well-prepared and having as many health professionals as we can have. So I thank you all very much for your kindness, for your attention, and this wonderful award. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mrs. Tita Vela that joined our meeting. I'm going to continue with the Faculty Senate Report. Kash Massahani, is he here? Oh, there you are.
He's in a suit. Hello, good afternoon, Madam President. And I was going to say Madam President over here, and feel excited about the two Madam Presidents, but she's still with us in spirit, somewhere here. Honorable Board Members, members of the faculty, staff, and the administration, my name is Prakash Mansahani, and I'm an Associate Professor of Government here at the college, and I shall serve as the Faculty Assembly President and its Senate. I'll just take a moment, if I will, to congratulate Ms. Nunnamaker on her new position. I'm so glad that everyone gave her the honor that she has, not just deserves, but has earned over the years here at the college. She's been a good mentor of mine, and we, on behalf of the faculty, wish you well, and if there's ever a desire on your part to come back, we will be waiting for you here. If not, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And we wish you the best, Ms. Nunnamaker. Thank you for everything you've done for the college, the faculty, and all of its stakeholders. If I will take another second, I know that Dr. Arizola mentioned the new hires. I'd like to, on behalf of the faculty, welcome all of the new hires, whether they're in staff, administration, or in particularly, of course, in the faculty. We welcome you onboard. We look forward to working with all of you, and whatever you might need, in any way that we can. I know that we are looking forward to work together to better the college. And today's going to be very uninformed, I only have about one more item here. Hopefully, it's my hope that we're working here with the administration to hopefully propose some form of proposal for you all in terms of some kind of increase at the next board meeting, whether it's a little nominal cost of living adjustment, a salary increase, or something along these lines. Keep in mind, it is my hope and intention that that increase, that hopefully comes before you at the next board meeting in October, is an increase that will be for consideration for all employees at this college, faculty, staff, and administration. So again, I'm going to be working with the administration to hope that we can put something forward for a vote at the October meeting, and as a reminder to the administration and the board, I remain available in any way to continue to work on that proposal if we need to. So hopefully, we can put something together for the board to consider at its upcoming meeting. So I hope the board will have something to consider, and a vote will take place. It's the board's decision to make. All we can do is put a proposal in front of you all, and it is my hope that that will happen in October. And last but not least, as I express every time I come up here, thank you for the opportunity to not only continue to deliver these presentations to you all, but to continue working at this college, and being part of the mission that we deliver every day. I've sat down with everybody in this room, really, to talk about the mission that we do, we work so hard at it, and oftentimes, I just say thank you for being able to be here, but thank you for being able to be here at this college, and I say that on behalf of all of the faculty that I represent. We really appreciate those opportunities, so thank you. That's it for today.
That's it.
That's it.
Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you, Kash.
Thank you.
The next report we have, Associated Student Organization Report.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Arizola, Dr. Tijerina, and all the executives here. Carmelino Castillo, Digital Student Life Director, for the record, and also the Associate Student Organization Advisor, and it is my pleasure this evening to introduce you to the 2122 ASO President, Mr. Alan Cantu, born and raised in Laredo, Texas, is a psychology major and has been a student at Laredo College for over two years. Alan has been a dedicated student his whole life, and it shows, graduating valedictorian of ACA High School. He has also been awarded the Scholastic Achiever Award, the LC President Student Leadership Award, and previously held the position of President in the Trio SSS Club. Alan?
Good evening, President Lupita Cepeda, Board Members, Dr. Marisol Rodriguez, Administrators, Faculty and Staff, and Guests. I'm Alan Cantu, for the record, I am the current ASO President, and it is an honor and a pleasure to be here. I am very excited to be working with you all. I would like to also give a little appreciation to my team. If you could please rise, would be Fatima Ponce, Vice President. And our Senator Pro Tempore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantu, and congratulations on being President of the ASO. Looking forward to working with you, myself and all the Board Members. Next item we have is the Classified Staff Council Report.
Good evening, Miss President Cepeda, sorry, Board Members and Administration. My name is Eda Vandis, for the record. I am the newly-elected President of the Classified Staff Council, and this is my first official meeting, I guess. It is an honor and a pleasure, and I'm hoping that I can do my best to represent the classified staff. And we're having, we already had our first official officers' meeting, and we plan our next scheduled meeting for the classified staff to be on October 21, and hoping to incorporate and really start representing that, those persons, and, sorry, in the classified employees. That's it, it's just a short.
Congratulations and welcome. We look forward to working with you. Okay, the next item, before we go to the consent agenda, I'd like to bring up Agenda 9G. I have some questions on it before anybody makes a motion to approve them. And the 9G is approval for renewal of unlimited broadband services purchased from T-Mobile Spring Business. Dr. Fred Solis.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. Fred Solis, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment. This particular item is a renewal of the current contract that we have for the unlimited broadband service. If you recall, this was the broadband service that was added to the laptops that were purchased using the carers' money.
using the Carers money. And so that service has now come to an end, and this is to renew it for one more year.
Okay.
It'll all be paid for through another Carers grant money as well. So it's all coronavirus grant money that's related.
Okay. And my question to that, are all carriers asked to participate?
In this particular case, it was, there was an inquiry done to the different carriers, and this was the best value that was proposed to the college.
And I understand it's the DIR, is that correct?
And that is correct.
Okay. That's all my question. Anybody else has any questions on that one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
I make a motion that we acknowledge the consent agenda from 9A through 9G.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No one opposed? Agendas 9A through 9G have passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Discussion and Possible Action, 10A, Approval Guarantee Maximum Price for South Campus Truck Driving Pad Project. Mr. Cesar Vela. I know, it's just the glare on this, it's kind of...
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Ariasola. For the record, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance. Tonight, we're asking the Board to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the South Campus Truck Driving Pad Project as presented by Line Decker Construction, the current construction manager at risk for Facilities Master Plan Phase III projects. The GMX being proposed for this project is $961,816.91. We did review this item with the Building Committee. We did have to make some modifications to the scope of work. When we received the original GMX, that GMX came in at 1.3 million, which was approximately $566,000 over our projected budget for the project. We went ahead and made some revisions, and the second draft that was submitted by Line Decker Construction came in at $1,103,533. Again, that was still $334,000 over. And then our last and final number that was received from Line Decker Construction, which is the one that we are presenting tonight for approval, again, came at $961,816.91. That's, again, that is still over what we had budgeted for the project. Once we add the A and E fees also, that project would be approximately $182,776 over what we had projected. We do have the funds available as part of the Facilities Master Plan Phase III contingency, and that is why we are recommending that we proceed with this project. Now, I do want to mention, and included in your board package, you have a breakdown of the costs. The items that you see on the screen, the items highlighted in yellow were the adjustments that were made. Originally, this project called for an allowance for landscape and irrigation of $100,000. We have deleted that amount. We also made an adjustment to concrete work, and this was, again, I believe was attributed to a canopy that was going to be placed in that location. And again, the metals work, which, again, was attributed to the canopy. We did have some electrical work that was being proposed for this project. When we reviewed the project, we did identify to have enough lighting in the area around the perimeter. We do have some adjustments that will be made to make sure that the path is lighted for security purposes. And then there was another adjustment, I believe, was for the fencing. The perimeter fencing is already in existence around this location. We do have gates that will be part of the project, so the truck driving pad will be secured. We do have a perimeter fence that will be around that facility. But we did have an allowance to put in a fence between the soccer field and the truck driving pad. At this time, we are removing that item, and we'll be addressing that item at a later time. Again, our recommendation is to, again, approve or proceed with approval of the guaranteed maximum price as presented by Line Decker Construction.
Okay. Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
I do have a question here in reference to the benches and as well as the other items there removed by owner. Who is the owner? I thought it was the college, the...
Yes, that is correct, Judge. That will be done in-house.
Oh, okay.
And again, it's a removal of the benches that are around that sports complex area, and also some fencing, backstop fencing.
Which will actually remain or, you know...
They'll be relocated, yes.
...warehoused up until the time that is needed for some...
Yes, and actually, the benches will be relocated to the soccer field that's next to the truck driving pad.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Now, I do want to mention that the changes and modifications that were done to bring the cost down do not impact the needs of the truck driving program. And also, they do not impact the pad itself to be qualified as a testing center for the Department of Public Safety. So again, all those things in mind, we are meeting the requirements that are needed. Against the items that are being right now removed are enhancements that were done to the project itself. But again, as far as the functionality, it is not impacted.
Okay, which are the benches and the bleachers?
Yes, that is one of the items that we're removing from Line Decker, and we're going to be handling in-house. It's basically just relocating benches and removing some of the backstop fencing.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Mr. Vela, I'm not sure if you have this information handy with you, but how many students normally register for this particular course on an annual basis?
Well, that's a good question, sir. I do not have that information, and Mr. Hernandez is out, and Ms. Cortez is also out, but we can provide that information later.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I move that we go ahead and approve this item. I'm sure you already went through the Finance Committee and all of that discussion.
I have a second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Matisse, I have a second by Judge Martinez. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Elizondo, are you there?
Guess not.
She never answered the first time. I don't believe she's there, unfortunately.
She sent me a text that she's there, but...
Hello?
Is this thing on?
Yes.
Ms. Elizondo, are you there?
Let me go to the next item. It's 10B, Resolution to Approve Transfer of 20% Annual General Operating Fund Savings to Physical Plant to Cover Deferred Maintenance Projects. Mr. Cesar Vela.
Yes, this next item is, again, as Cepeda mentioned, is we are asking that the Board approve a resolution to transfer 20% of the annual general operating fund savings to Physical Plant to cover deferred maintenance projects. I do have a couple of slides here, pictures that we're taking here at the Fort Macintosh campus, just so that we can show some of the items that we need to address. As you know, we do have right now out requests for proposals to do parking lot repairs, both here at the Fort Macintosh and at the South Campus. If you can see here, there's a picture of the corner right at the Lopez Building, what used to be the Lopez Nursing Building, not the Lopez Building. You can see the condition of some of the parking lots. With the approval of this resolution, it would provide the funding to address projects similar to this. Again, this would be one of the first projects that we would be working on. As you can see here, we do have a picture of building T-30, used to be the old theater for the fort, and you can see that the condition of the siding of the building is in need of repair and paint work. And then, as we mentioned, when we talk about deferred maintenance, and we, it could be as simple as knocking down or cutting down dead trees. As you can see here, from the past winter storm, we did have some trees that did not survive, and these trees right now currently, this one is right next to the renovated library. So those are things that we need to address to make sure that those trees don't fall on those buildings. Some of the projects that were covered on the Facilities Master Plan Phase II included the campus housing. Well, those buildings are starting to show their age again, and just as simple as replacing the mosquito netting and the porches needs to be done. And again, you can see here, the siding of the buildings as well as the paint. This one item here, it is part of a Facilities Master Plan Phase III project, and it will be addressed as part of the fiber infrastructure project. However, the focus that we wanted to show here is the building across that sidewalk or that future sidewalk is the Arechica Hall, the Arechica Building. One of the items that we need to address in this building, the building itself is structurally sound, is in good condition, but the porches, the outside porches, need work. You can see here from the pictures, we're starting to show some age, the second-floor porches. On the north side of the building, we do have a problem, part of the porch, so we do need to address that. Now, like I mentioned, the building itself is structurally sound, but we do need to address the porches, as you can see from the pictures here. So again, these are just some examples of the work that's needed throughout campus. We have invested quite, we have done a good investment with, through the bond projects. But again, as you can see here, this is one of the buildings that was addressed as part of Phase II, and we're starting to show some of the age. So with this resolution, what would happen is that any year that we have savings at the end of the year, we're asking that 20% be allocated to the deferred maintenance fund to address this type of projects. Now, if I may, I would like to read the resolution that is being presented tonight for approval, and it reads as follows. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Laredo College desires to hereby approve a resolution relating to the transfer of annual general operating fund savings to the deferred maintenance fund, whereas the Board desires that the transfer of funds to the deferred maintenance fund shall be equal to 20% of annual general operating fund savings, whereas the transfer of funds shall be used to cover costs associated with deferred maintenance of facilities and equipment as approved by the Board of Trustees. Whereas the Board agrees that such transfers will only be made if the general operating fund balance reflects no less than 20% of the general operating budget expenditures for that fiscal year. And again, this relates to a resolution that was passed by the Board to maintain at least 20% in the general operating fund balance of our budgeted expenditures. So at any point where we don't have that 20% in reserve, we would not be making a transfer for deferred maintenance projects. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Laredo College Board of Trustees, that this resolution shall take effect on October 1st, 2021, and remains in effect until the Board rescinds this resolution. For the effective period of this resolution, it shall be a goal of the Board to transfer 20% of annual general operating fund savings to the deferred maintenance fund to cover costs associated with deferred maintenance of facilities and equipment under the conditions specified above. This resolution shall take effect upon it being passed and approved by the Laredo College District Board of Trustees, passed and approved by the Laredo College District Board of Trustees on this 30th day of September 2021.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Chair recognizes Dr. Ferranza.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
President, the only question I was going to ask, this money is, I know, for this campus, right?
It would be for both campuses.
Because the South Campus needs a lot of work.
That is correct.
Because it wasn't mentioned here.
No.
You mentioned, you know, I know about the eroding buildings and all that, because all you've got to do is walk around.
Yes.
You know, but the thing is that the South needs a lot of work, also on the streets, you know.
That is correct, yes.
So as long as the South is included on both boards.
Yes, no, no, these would be deferred maintenance projects throughout Laredo Colleges, both campuses. And the RFP that's out right now includes the parking lots and streets of both campuses.
All right, that's good.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Madam Chair and fellow Board Members, I would like to ask, if this resolution does pass, this is in place until it's rescinded?
Correct.
So could it not be on a yearly basis, or does it have to be in place until we come back to the table and rescind it, or can it be reviewed every year? So, because like right now, as it is in place, it's going to stay there until...
Well, but the resolution states that if we don't have that additional 20%,
Yeah, that's correct.
the money will not be transferred.
That is correct.
But it will be an automatic every year if the money is there?
If the money is there, it would be a 20% transfer of, and again, depending on the savings. So if a particular year we have savings, 20% of those savings get transferred. The other condition that needs to be met is if we don't have the 20% savings in the general operating fund, we won't make that transfer also.
But even if, because if the resolution states that it cannot be rescinded until those two important points are covered, which is, one, that the money is there, but the other is that it's going to be an automatic thing, that the Board will not see that information on a yearly basis if those two conditions are met. So in other words, we won't be notified because the resolution is in place until it is rescinded if those two points are met, correct?
No, this would be informational, the information would be provided to the Board at the end of the fiscal year. When we present the audit, you'll be able to see the savings and what would be transferred over to the deferred maintenance projects.
So it wouldn't be an automatic thing that every year you would just...
It would not require Board approval at that point. It would be more for information purposes. And as far as the resolution, it could be rescinded at any time, again.
So when they bring it to us, at that point, can we vote on it? Or can we rescind it if the Board doesn't approve? And I'm asking Mr. Accia, I'm sorry.
Yes, for the record, again, I want to say here for Casey Muir-Pedis, no, if the Board passes the resolution, it's, once those two conditions are met, it's an automatic transfer. It would have to, it would have to be, Board would have to take action at that point to undo the transfer or to...
To rescind and...
To make another transfer to remove it once it had already been transferred. But that transfer would have to be done according to the Board action, according to the resolution.
Okay. Chair recognizes Mrs. Vela.
You need to talk into the mic, please.
Speak to the mic.
I have it off. Looking at these pictures, we have to do something. And, you know, especially in both campuses, of course, but some of these buildings here are part of our history, and they're very, very important, and we need to keep them up. And I think up until now, we've been thinking of new buildings and doing new stuff, and we forget of what we have, and we have something that's extremely valuable that we need to maintain. So I think it's a great idea that we're using our savings to do that. I really do. And I'm sure that the, all of our Physical Plant, and Mr. Cepeda, would be very happy if we would do this for him.
Chair recognizes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, and the goal here, as you mentioned, Ms. Vela, is that, one, we want to maintain these buildings. We have done a major investment through the bonds. But we are also, again, when we look at this, we're trying to avoid getting to a point where we will have to float another bond to...
Absolutely.
...to do some of these repairs. So again, this resolution, again, would be in effect, and the transfer would only be made if we had the savings, the savings, and it would only be 20% of whatever that savings are, and of course, maintaining the general operating fund balance, the 20%.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Matisse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All I want to say is the fact that I think the Board remains in the driver's seat for this particular resolution, and as Mr. Vela so stipulated a little while ago, presentation's going to be made to the Board at the time of the budget or whenever. We asked for a report to say, you know, how are the monies being... report to say, you know, how are the monies being spent, or we're coming to the end of the year, what does it look like, that we're going to be needing, you know, we are going to be making those, those changes, and also, I mean, I think it's, yeah, I agree too, it's a good thing, and I think we'll always have, we will always have control.
Yeah, and just to make a clarification, the projects themselves, the resolution states that they need to be brought to the board. So the projects themselves will be brought to the board, the funding source would be identified as a deferred maintenance fund, and the board would approve on those project, well, I'm sorry, on, on those projects. So like I mentioned, right now, we are working on the parking lot project, which includes both campuses. Once we have all that information, we would bring that to the board, and then, if this passes, this would probably be a recommended project for this deferred maintenance fund.
Chair recognizes Mr. Esteban Ranget joining us in the meeting. Any other questions?
If I'm in order, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve this resolution moving forward.
So I have a, a motion by Ms. Maris, do I have a second? Second by Dr. Carranza, any discussion? I just have a question on, I know that the, the parking lots are going out for bids as we speak, but we had mentioned that the south campus, there's construction going on, and I see that there's a lot of traffic with the contractors. So are we going to wait until some of the construction gets done to get those fixed?
Yes.
The parking lots?
Yes, and again, right now, the idea is to do sections at a time.
Okay.
So we would identify those parking lots that are currently, and, and at the south campus, we do have the roof project right now, so you've got materials, trucks moving around. But yes, we'll work out a schedule where we would address those parking lots.
Okay, good. Thank you, Ms. Vela.
If I may?
Yes.
On that, on that point...
Chair recognizes Mr. Ranget.
Thank you. On that point, for the parking lot in the south, we will be able to still go out for the bid for the full parking lot, but then just do a schedule with the, with the contractor, right?
That is correct, yes, sir. Right now, we do have a request for the whole parking lot, and again, as, as the requests come in, we'll, we'll make decisions whether we tackle it all at once, in sections, but again, as, as far as the schedule, yes, that's something that we will work with the contractor to make sure that we don't repair a parking lot, and then it's going to get beaten, turned down with the construction.
And have we, have we made communication with the City of Laredo for the, the main street here, for the McIntyre?
Can I answer that one?
Yes.
Sitting Councilwoman Alisa Ziarroa has reached out to Mr. Sepeda, and they're going to go ahead and meet and discuss.
Okay. If you could, I guess if Mr. Sepeda could give us a, a report on it, hopefully on the, on the next, on the next meeting, on building meeting, thank you.
Okay, anything else? So I want to call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Elison, are you there? She's not answering her text either, okay.
So she's still...
Thank you, Ms. Vela. Next item is 10C, approved modification to Laredo College Board Policy, DEB Local, Compensation and Benefits, Fringe Benefits. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez De Herina and Dr. Arizola will report for her.
Madam President, David Arizola, interim provost for the record again. If I may, before I get into this item, I would like to answer Mr. Delgado's question about the truck driving, the number of students. It's, I've reached out to Ms. Cortez, and she says over 100 students per year take advantage of the, of the truck driving program.
Do you know the cost? Sorry, man.
The cost is usually about, it's a little bit more expensive, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'll, I'll get back to you here in a few seconds. So with this item on the agenda, we're presenting modifications to DEB Local. DEB Local covers our employee tuition and fees waiver program. So the changes that we're proposing are, are mostly to clarify and update, right? So the last time this policy was updated was in 2018. Since then, whether it be because of the pandemic or just the progress of higher education, we've made quite a few changes here at the college. Most notably, the, many of our programs are no longer running on a, on a traditional semester system, right? So no longer September to December, you know, we have programs that run on seven-week courses, on eight-week courses, we have winter masters that run for three weeks, and the same with May, May masters, and so we, the, the semester system has, is a little bit outdated. So we've clarified that language in this program, so to allow employees to take advantage of the tuition waiver per session rather than per semester. That's one of the major changes that we made. We've also outlined, to make it a little bit more clear as to who can take advantage, and what are some of the conditions for taking advantage of the wellness program. We worked together with Dr. Guerrero and Ms. Cortez to make sure that we were, that we covered both the continuing education portion, in the case of Ms. Cortez, and our new BASS program in the case of Dr. Guerrero. But again, if anything, overall, the, the theme of the changes is to allow our employees to take advantage of this and, and, you know, create a little bit more accessibility for higher education for, for them.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Ms. Maris.
Thank you. I was part of the Program and Policy Committee, we met on Monday, and basically, the bottom line is that we're just trying to streamline this policy as well as staying on top of the changes that are occurring to the metamorphosis of this institution. And so we talked about a little bit the, how the tuition waiver has been on board, I think, for over 10 years, if nothing else. And over time, we've just been cutting and pasting and band-aiding, and so now, with the technology and the new, you know, the new normal that we have in this institution, and having to stay abreast of all the changes that are going on, this was, you know, needed, you know, to just narrow it down and say, and stipulate for all the different types of, of programs that we have in semester lengths and the cohorts that we have. So it's a good thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chair recognizes Ms. Vela.
I know many, many years ago, when I worked here, I took advantage of all of this. I'm here. I did, I took advantage of it, and so did my husband. I mean, and it's a really awesome thing, benefit to our employees. You know, both the, everything, the wellness and the tuition, all of them, so...
Madam Chair, if I'm in order, may I make a motion?
Yes. So I have a, recognizes Ms. Ramos?
I make a motion to approve the modifications to Laredo College Board Policy, DEB Local, Compensation and Benefits, Fringe Benefits.
Second then. So I have a, a motion by Ms. Ramos, I have a second by Ms. Maris. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Elisondo? No, she's not answered. Okay. Motion passes, sorry. 10D is adopted resolution supporting specialized custom services application to become a usage-driven foreign trade zone, number 94 designation, located at 8511 Milo Road Boulevard, Laredo, Texas 78045. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez De Herina, that will be presented by Dr. Arizola.
Madam President, David Arizola, interim provost for the record again. On item 10D, we have received a request from a member of, of the community to make this foreign trade zone number 94. So to be clear, you'll see in your board packet that it's one bay of the warehouse that we're making a foreign trade zone, it's not the entire, it's not the entire warehouse, it's just simply one bay of that.
Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion? Have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Judge Martinez, any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 10F is creation of a student success committee due to 2021 Community College Association of Texas Trustees Annual Conference and Board Trustees Institute.
Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, 10E. I didn't look up to look at the, at legal over there, sorry. 10E's approval of Laredo College Board of Trustees goals, Ms. Jackie Levin Ramos.
Madam Chair and fellow board members, I would give you, there is a handout that you've received of some proposed goals that were provided during the retreat that we had. However, I feel that we still need a little bit more time to review these individual recommendations.
Finally.
Let, let's finish that, Ms. Ramos, and then I'll recognize you, okay? Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, so these items were provided to us as suggestions from the individuals that participated in the retreat. We did have some other board members that did not participate because they were unable to be there, but I would like to give them an opportunity also to make any suggestions. Some of the common goals that are, that we have talked about throughout these, the front and back page of this area, the recommendations were made by the individuals that were listed on this site. I apologize if I failed to put somebody's name, but they didn't put the names on the card, so I, I couldn't write down their names, so, you know.
Okay.
But some of the items that we might think about are student success, enrollment is a common subject, retention, a board manual with a board orientation that includes professional development for the board members, advocacy, community relationships, COVID-19, new, the new president, dual enrollment programs, fiscal responsibility, academic, workforce, vocational, technical programs, and an increase in the adequately implementing, carrying out our second bachelors, or even the first bachelors that we have. Those are some of the proposed goals or subjects that we can look at. Many of our board members and those individuals that participated with us in the retreat talked about those common issues, common threads, our enrollment, the retention. And so in coming up with the goals as a board, we need to focus on what are those things that we can, we can have some sort of, like, many of the things we cannot do. It's not in our job description to do them, but we can certainly establish policy that will help us with the procedures that administration would go through. So as far as our goals, we need to look at what, what are the most important things, and so if it pleases the board, I would continue to work on the goals and provide them to everybody through their email. Again, I can send this through email, and then just so that we can get a common, a common goal, a common idea of what we want to pass. I think this is very important, it correlates with our attendance to the conference that we had, because it talks about a strategic plan, plus it also talks about goals that we set as a board for ourselves. So if it pleases the board, I'd like to defer this item to the next meeting, but also with consideration to review and consider those options that have been provided and any other additions.
Thank you. Before we go any further, let me go ahead and recognize Ms. Elisondo. Chair recognizes Ms. Elisondo.
Yes. Sorry, I, for the record, I've been connected since 6:04, and also would like to be considered for the Student Success Lives Committee, and I would like to appoint Cynthia Maris as Chair.
We're, we're not there yet, Ms. Elisondo, and I did recognize you right after 6:05, and we've been, I've been, I've called you out, and I haven't heard you, you speak to us until right now. So I'll, I'll take in consideration what you just said, thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Dr. Carranza.
He made a motion.
Oh, he made, Dr. Carranza made a motion to defer 10E, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Vela. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now I can go to 10F, right?
Yes, now you can.
Did Ms. Elisondo vote?
Oh, Ms. Elisondo, did you vote? Hello?
Pardon me?
Did you vote on the item?
To defer.
To defer the, the Board of Trustees' goals?
I can't hear you.
I need your vote on the deferring of the Laredo College Board of Trustees' goals. We're going to send them via email for everybody to look at them, and if you want to include any new ones.
Okay, thank you.
So is that a yes? Hello? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Arcea? Oh, okay. Next item is 10F, creation of a student success committee due to a 2021 College Association of Texas Trustees Annual, Annual Conference and Board of Trustees Institute, Ms. Cynthia Maris and Ms. Jackie Levin Ramos, and Dr. Maricela Rodriguez De Herina. Ms. Maris, Chair recognizes Mrs. Maris.
Thank you, I'll, I guess we kind of talked about this presentation and PowerPoint that Ms. Ramos put together, which is very well done. I'll, I'll yield for her to do the introduction and walk us a little bit through that, and then I'll just finalize the segment.
Okay.
If you don't mind, thank you.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Would you like for me to do the PowerPoint that goes with it?
Sure.
Yes?
Okay.
I don't know.
Do you have it?
Yes, I do, and it's already on the computer. Ms. Bocanegra? Good evening, I'm going to step on the other row. For the record, Jackie, Jackie Levin Ramos, trustee. Good evening to everyone in attendance, I did want to share with everyone, our, Ms. Maris, and Dr. De Herina, and myself attended a conference in Austin a couple of weeks ago. We went to the Community College Association of Texas Trustees and the Board of Trustees Institute. At this conference, we were able to provide, they were able to provide to us wealth of information, a plethora of items that we might have considered before, but maybe we hadn't, you know, touched upon them, and we hadn't reviewed them, but it certainly brought to light some of the, some of the things that are going on now as we speak, the ever-changing, the transformation of our college. And, and there's a copy for you there, I won't go over the whole thing exactly, but I will just touch upon the most important points of the conversation. Ms. Maris will then come back and speak about the perspectives of the conference itself, and provide us with more input from the conference itself. I would like to say that the CCAT Annual Conference and Board of Trustees Institute brings together trustees and CEOs to focus on evidence-based inquiry and participate in guided discussions on how boards can support sustainable institutional change at the scale. And these individuals gather together, they're different members of different boards across the state, along with the CEOs, presidents, and we meet together and we discuss, and we participate in plenary sessions. And this was the first time that I really didn't have a chance to step out, because if I stepped out just to go to the ladies' room, or just to go get a drink of water, I was going to miss a lot of information. So we all stuck together at the same time, and then we broke off into plenary sessions. I do want to say that one of the things that we learned is that leading together can create a culture of change with strategic direction. The trustees were, were, were committed to action that would support a culture of change, monitor what matters, and set the strategic direction for student success. Some of the actions of effective boards, I'll just pinpoint some of the different ones, and he, Dr. McClain talked about setting the strategic direction for student success, which is, takes us to the student success committee. And one of them says, do you, does your vision plan address the needs of your service area? And so most of us have been doing that, but not in a strategic plan and not in goals. So that's why we talk about a student success committee and making that come to fruition and being able to have it. From our side, as the, as the board, having the student success committee will provide us with an opportunity to see how the programs develop and how the programs are carried out. We already get that information, but it's in a, in a formal manner. Creating the culture for change and transformation, one of the questions like number three, do you have strategic alliances with K through 12 districts and universities? And that is a definite yes. So we would answer those questions, saying that we are most, mostly effective, but we need to be totally effective, so we can, we can strive to become better. Monitor what happens, are you willing to create a culture of inquiry, evidence, and accountability with data, data, and data? So some of these are some... So some of these are some questions that I would like for you to consider. The plenary sessions, the team strategy time and the concurrent sessions were all very valuable. They provided us with student success through pathways, accreditation, student-centered governance, even COVID-19 lessons learned, especially from those individuals that presented and from the others that didn't present, but they were in the audience as well. One of the things that we did do is we set the strategic direction to change post-COVID-19. Many of us speak about going back to where we were before, to the normal, but I think it's going back to the new, new, not normal, but the new, the newness of this. As if we are emerging as a flower coming up from, you know, from the ground, brand new. So we are thinking and restrategizing, what are the different ways that we can address our new population? Our students that are coming in, how are we addressing them? How is the board promoting advocacy? We use the data from this very important almanac called the Texas Public Higher Education Almanac, and this is our statistical data for Laredo College. It is a, about a, about a hundred-page document that's available online at T H E C B. And the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board provides this information from us. They tell us how much faculty we have. They tell us how much debt we have, what are graduation rates, what are the successes of the graduates, how many students do we transfer? All of that comes in this almanac based on the information from 2020. We utilize this information to meet with a strategy for the team strategy time. Team strategy time one, we monitored what happened and we revealed some gradu, some information about our graduation at our institution. For example, full-time three-year students, LC had thirty-three point nine percent. Part-time three-year students, eleven point nine percent, and full-time six-year, thirty-nine point six. Some of the other items I would like for you to take a look at because those are some of the things that we talked about coming from the almanac as well. Team strategy time two, supporting a culture of change. We talked about the Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence winners from the Aspen Institute. And we were very impressed with these other colleges, even though they are in the very large market or the large market, we happen to be in the large market. And so Alamo College District, San Antonio College, talked about three things that we should all do as a board and as a community of school. It begins with a leadership. It's a hundred percent committed to continuous improvement and it's all about the data coming from the almanac. St. Jack College talked to us a little bit about the changing culture, the shift data-driven decisions, policy versus procedures, employee performance. And they even talked about pay scales and how they monit, how they managed to change the pay scales that they have, all focusing on student success and equity policy changes. Team strategy change, it was setting the strategic direction. And again, I would like for you to all review that because it's all about student success through pathways, the key performance indicators, exploring other options for governance and leadership roles, and activating a Student Success Committee. Those are some of the things that we came up with that we would like to see happening in the future. Some of the last items, the points of interest, success pathways, Student Success Committee, KPI, sixty by thirty Texas, which means sixty percent of generation Texas will have a post-secondary credential or degree by 2030. The four pillars of guided pathways, strategic direction, creating a culture of change, leading together, and most importantly, supporting leadership and supporting the management that's available there. And then finally, I would like, you know, I'm sending you this PowerPoint also as well. I'd like for you to see this video on the Texas Legislature and the colleges because it provides us on how they're working on the skills, especially one of the grants that was provided or that was deferred. They're gonna talk about that also in this video, but I won't play it because it's about two minutes long. So I'm gonna shorten it for, for our board members. But I, I definitely recommend that one of the considerations is the reactivation of the Student Success Committee. Do you mind? Do you want me to?
No, go ahead and play. It's two minutes.
It's two minutes.
Dr. Carranza.
Dr. Carranza, I'm looking at him, that's why. I was like, he makes me nervous.
A lot of this is already in our brains already, you know. I know that you, you went to a seminar then?
Yes, they went to a seminar.
Okay.
But I don't have to say it. I can, I can certainly leave it at your discretion. You can see the video if you'd like. Because I, if, if I felt that we still needed a little bit more of acquaintance, then I would, you know, share it.
Oh, okay. So you can send it to us?
Yes, I can send it to you.
Perfect.
It would appease Ms. Dr. Carranza, so. And I've also provided for you in this PowerPoint that I'm gonna send you is the resources to consider. So in case you're looking to look for other avenues or other venues that can provide us with some direction or some experience, we can call on other individuals, other board members in other cities that will give us some ideas and we work together as a collaborative effort. Ms. Maris, would you like to join me? So, or you want to say from there?
Thank you. Well, that's fine. If you don't mind, I don't have any slides.
That's fine.
No, this is fine. This is fine. I mean, amongst you, amongst you guys. Basically, I know we have that slide presentation that covered a lot of the, the topics that, that we, we went to. But I think the takeaway for us as trustees, I mean, what is the bottom line, you know, from all this information? And thankfully, Ms., you have a copy of it for your perusal. And I would just call your attention to slide number two, three, and eight. You know, that you do the focus on that because what is it that it's, it is trying to impress on us? And, and like I said, the common thread was about, you know, what are we doing as trustees to create a campus where students can reach their potential? I mean, really, what are we doing? How are we defining our leadership voice in support of diversity, inclusion, and equity? Those were the three terms and those are the new terms, I guess, for our new normal. So do we have policies in place? We know our programs, are they helping to educate, to empower, to engage, you know, the students in diversity? The practices, what is the board doing to ensure that this is happening? The politics, do we understand, you know, the politics of creating a change? Because we've been so complacent with everything. And, you know, we, we have to consider our, who are the shareholders? You know, who are the players in all of this? Obviously, the students. So like I said, the takeaway would be for us to come together and, and it's funny how, not funny, but I'm saying that what we did in, in the board retreat, unknowingly, all of those, you know, points and things that everybody is, all of us as board members are interested, I'm glad to see, they tie in exactly into this conference because we're talking about, you know, that diversity, the expansion of programs. And so we need to have a conversation, I think, at some point, this board, that how well do we understand, you know, diversity in education? Because they talked about visible traits and invisible traits. The visible traits are easy. It's the gender, the race, you know, et cetera. But the invisible traits, how are students, you know, coping with those? We have homeless students, you all, in here at L College and everywhere. There's homeless students. There's people, there's students going through depression, through whatever, you know, PTSD because they've just come back, you know, from serving. So how well are we addressing that and making them feel that even though regardless of all those, you know, circumstances, we are here to help them to reach their goals and their potential? So like I said, the takeaway is that, that we have to work together. We have to continue our work as, as trustees but understanding, you know, those three now key elements of diversity, inclusion, and equity. And I'm sure they all fall into place. And definitely the underlying thing was the Student Success Committee. And we felt, the three of us, when we were sitting there and trying to put an action plan together, we're saying, there's no other way around it. We've got, we must reactivate that Student Success Committee, which was open about four years ago, but nothing ever came of it. But now we need to. We have ammunition now and we can now arm ourselves. And that committee can do the work of everything that Ms. Ramos pointed out that's in your presentation that we learned. Obviously, you know, none of us have the individual time to do it, but a, a committee comprised of everyone, like I said, inclusion, inclusion, students and administrators and faculty, and, and then setting the goals and, and how we're gonna move this institution forward by, by being more proactive and by working together as a team. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ramos, for putting this together. And thank you to Dr. De Herina as well, her contributions. You know, she was our recorder, you know, typing away every time we would meet and all. But I, I thank you all as board members and hope that this is not the last conversation, I hope. And we'll be coming back with other, other things and other topics. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes. Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
What, you want to give?
Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Yes, I mean, this has been a, we provide, the last president that was here, I didn't mention to him that we need to attend more seminars. Because you're enlightened, all this enlightenment that's coming in here is good because that's what you picked up, different languages and all that, that's being used out there. I've been here, I guess, five years almost and, and I only attended maybe two seminars and that's about it. But that was years ago. You know, so I think it's very important that we attend seminars, you know, at least one a year or whatever, or two if you can, but whatever the college can afford.
Sure.
You know, but if, when you come back, you come back with all these brilliant ideas, which is good. But it doesn't pay our college, most of them. But we can take little, like a puzzle, we can play with it, you know, and, and use it. But other than that, you know, the enlightenment is good. That's all I have to say to that.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
So in, in closing, we would just say that these are some sort of proactive strategies. And yes, board policy development is, is making ourselves better. If we're at a point where we're good, we're gonna be better. And so creating these other venues that we can utilize to help and help our students be successful, help our administration. Because during the conference, Dr. De Herina was front and center, providing us with updates and, and giving us, educating us, really, because some of the wording, maybe we had never heard before, HSIs, pathways, things like that, that we don't get a chance to hear on a daily basis. But if we're in education like myself, then I hear it very often, but then I would like others to know about it as well. So a, a Student Success Committee assesses, evaluates, makes recommendations for student support strategies to enhance student access, persistence, and goal attainment. It identifies obstacles to student success and implements actions to address the issues. It also reviews and recommends policies and actions related to enrollment and all student services. We brought the Student Success Committee, like Ms. Maris said, almost four years ago. And we assigned a, a, an individual to be in, in charge of the, of chairing the, the committee, but it never took off. And so what we need to do is take action. Once the members of the committee have been in place, it's about monthly meetings, it's about updates to the board, it's about working collaboratively with administration to be able to carry out what is taking place outside where we're, we don't get a chance to be in. We don't go to the classrooms. We don't get a chance to talk to the kids. But definitely our venue and our connecting part is the administration and the individuals who are in charge of the different programs that can help us, help them be successful.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Ramos, and thank you, Mrs. Maris. A great idea to go ahead and start the Student Success Committee. I'd like to, at this time, assign or, assign trustee Maris as the chairperson and Ms. Ramos and Ms. Elizondo as members to work hand in hand with Dr. De Herina and get the, the program going.
My pleasure.
So if I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Angel. I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Oh, do you have a question, Ms. Arcea?
That's fine. That's my second.
Okay, second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? Ms. Elizondo, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Elizondo, did you vote?
I don't think she's online anymore. Ms. Elizondo, are you still with us? She's off.
Next item, I'm gonna go to eleven, information items. Eleven A, student activities and future programs. Eleven A one, information on bachelor's degree and organizational leadership. Dr. David Ariasola and Dr. Marisa Guerrero. Dr. Ariasola.
Madam President, David Ariasola, interim programs for the record again. And again, I would like to start by following up on your question, Mr. Angel. It is, the cost of the program is three thousand six hundred and twenty dollars per, for the program. It runs about five weeks.
Thank you.
The trucking.
The truck.
Sorry, guys.
No, it's all right.
Thank you.
Now, on to item eleven A dot one. We have started recruiting and getting students for our new bachelor's degree program. We're very excited. We have, to, to see our, our vision come to light. You know, a, a lot of the, when we were designing this program and then putting it together, a, a lot of the students that we had in mind that we would attract, that's exactly who we're getting. And it's, it's, it's one of the best things to see the, the letters of intent come in and say, yes, that's what we were thinking of when, when we were putting this together. But I'm going to introduce Dr. Marisa Guerrero, who has been here at the college in, in, in different capacities, English Department Chair, Faculty Dean. She has now taken on the role of the Director of the Bass Oracle Program. And she will enlighten us with a, a lot, a lot more information about the program.
Good evening, board members, Madam President, Dr. Ariasola, Dr. Marisa Guerrero, for the record. And yes, we are very excited. And I'll be very brief because I'm gonna read Dr. Carranza's facial expressions. I just want to give a very brief update. As you know, we were approved in August by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board to offer our second bachelor's degree. And as Dr. Ariasola said, we're ecstatic. We are receiving students daily who are expressing interest and applying to the program. You can see here, we have some informational sessions. We would love any of our board members or members of the audience to attend. We have one tomorrow at noon in De La Garza 101. And again, the program, as y'all remember, is taking our associate's degree program graduates, taking that entire block of sixty hours of courses and topping it off with our organizational leadership courses. And, and as Dr. Ariasola mentioned, part of the process is students have to fill out an application and send us a letter of intent. And it's just so interesting to hear their stories. And I think I'm very blessed in the role that the board and administration has given me in kind of starting this program as seeds because I interview every single student individually on Zoom and on phone calls. And they tell me, I've been working in finance for twenty years and I just can't move up because I don't have a bachelor's degree. Or I've been wor, I have people, I've been working at Target, I've been working at Walmart. And I'm, I'm all the way to the top, but I just don't have that degree. I have three kids at home, my kids are in college, and now it's my turn. So it's just so heartwarming, as Dr. A said, because that's who we want to hit. That's who we wanted this program for. I had a student today say, I don't know if this sounds bad, but, you know, I just, I don't have time as like an eighteen-year-old kid. I don't want to go to a big university. I want to go here. I said, ma'am, that doesn't sound bad at all. You're who we wrote this program for. So we're really excited. And just to break it down by the numbers, again, we've been at this for about eight weeks now and we're at about sixty-seven students who have already expressed interest. So it's been an outstanding response. And so.
Very, very good.
Thank you. And so we have different kind of organizations. We've gotten them to some of them. They've come in right away. And we interviewed them and we put them into the program, Cohort One, Cohort Two. Some of them are pre-programmed, that they need a little bit of course, coursework, but every single student gets processed. We have thirty students who have attended informational sessions. And so we sit down with them one-on-one and we tell them, and this is what I like to say, this is when you're gonna graduate. And they're like, okay, I'm in. So they get really excited. We have student leadership trainings planned for December and July. We'll be working with Mr. Castillo, with Dr. Ariasola and President Marisa de Herina Rodriguez, Rodriguez de Herina, to develop these student leadership because again, we're developing leaders. And so we are calling on the expertise of our college community, our faculty and our staff to provide them with some training. We're also looking at what's next, right? So we've only been here for eight weeks, but we're already, okay, so what's the next phase? And so we've started working with, for example, Region One and looking at how our graduates who are interested in becoming educators can become teachers using this degree and alternative certification. So we're really excited about that. We're also looking at those articulations for our first responders and CPB. So folks who have done those police academy trainings can then transfer that for college credit. So lots of different things and even going into master's degrees. And so we're looking at making pathways for our students. Again, we are pending SAC COC approval. We're looking to have that in December. And we have officially fifteen students who have been accepted into the program. And we have some starting in January and some starting in August. And so we're looking at a total of fifty students that we will accept this first time around. So we're very excited. Off to a really good start. And so one of the interesting things, as we talked about these letters of intent, we kind of took all these letters and we dumped them into this program. You know, I'm sure y'all are familiar with it, that it makes this little word graphic. And the, these are the words that came up from our students. And I just think if you just take a look at it, why our students want to be in this program. Opening doors, helping them get further into their career. Opening doors, helping them get further into their career, and to just get that degree that they've been waiting so long to get. And so, we're very happy. I want to thank the board for your vision in bringing this degree to our college. I want to thank Dr. Arisola and Dr. Marisa Rodriguez Tijerina for their leadership and their guidance as we move forward into this degree. So, again, I just want to thank y'all for your time, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to entertain those.
Any questions? Chair recognizes Mr. Angel.
Thank you. On our advisors, I know that a lot of kids out there come in here and pretty much the parents send them, basile al colegio, and so, they're here. Are we pushing this program to our advisors to, to be able to say, if you don't know what you want, we have, you know, this program that, that could, that could help you? Or even, even if we have students that are about to transfer over to TAMIU, are we offering, you know what, you're going out for a BA in, in, in TAMIU or anywhere else, we are offering this for you? Are we reaching out to those kids currently, right now?
So, that's a great question. So, this is, and this is one of the things I wanted to bring up that slipped my mind when I got up here and got all excited, is that this program is campus-wide. And so, we've had, there's so many hands in the kitchen right now. So, I'm kind of at the forefront, you see my face, but I'm not the only one working out. So, we have the folks in Ms. Lopez's area, we're working really closely with the advisors. So, as an incoming freshman comes in, they're still two, three years out from doing their senior-level coursework, but we have what we call pre-program candidates, and their advisors will begin to get them on the right track to take those. We also have our 11 feeder programs everywhere, from culinary arts, child development, criminal justice, and every director is, of course, has their advisors. So, as students are articulating from there, they may have one to go to TAMIU, but they'll say, wait, don't, don't forget, we have this one. And so, yeah, we're working really closely. We have just a, a kind of a web of advisors. And then, within my division, we're also working, we have two faculty advisors and myself, which is three, and we're going to be hiring academic coach and other advisors as well.
And have we provided a certain training for those advisors at all those areas? Let it be, you know, criminal justice, let it be culinary. Have we, have we provided any type of training to be able to say, you know what, you could still continue the path within Laredo College if you want to pursue this degree?
Sure. So, we've done like the preliminary. So, we have basically what you would call an articulation agreement with every, every division. So, I have a very close relationship with them. You know, we know our students on a first-name basis. I'll give you an example. So, I had a young man from Homeland Security. He came and applied in the program. So, I turned around to Dr. Bailey, Dr. Bailey, I have student X here, wants to come in the program. Dr. Bailey and I talked, and we sat down and made him an individualized plan. So, he's going to finish his Homeland, and then he's going to hop over to me, and then he's mine. And so, yeah, yeah. So, we have, it's pretty extensive. And if you think about it, we have 11 feeder programs plus just our general students. So, it's pretty extensive, but we're going to continue to do that, continue to train and strengthen as we go. But I think for Phase One, we have a pretty solid advisement plan.
That's, that's really good. My last question would be, I'm sorry, my last question. What are we doing on the marketing platform for this? What, how are we going to push this out there into the community? Have we thought about a marketing program or something like that, that we could be able to, to push it into the campuses, all, all high school campuses, and then also to the community? Like you said, there is a lot of people that probably took classes in, in, in their years, and we could be, maybe, you know, offer them, like you said earlier, this is your graduating date. Have, what, what marketing, what are we going to do for marketing for, to, to be able to help this program?
Right. So, great question. I can tell you what we're doing now and then what we're going to do, right? So, I kind of, we say Phase One, right? So, we're at our baby stages, but our marketing group, led under Ober Guerrero and the others, they're doing a fantastic job. We've been on social media, we've been on the news outlets, we actually did the morning show this week, we've done other shows as well. We have, just using all of those resources. In addition to that, we also, what was the second part of your question? You said the community, okay. So, then we have Ms., I wouldn't forget about you, Ms. Ortiz. And so, we're really pushing with the high schools. That's going to be a whole nother level of students we're going to gain. So, she's already reaching out to the high schools, getting the word out, getting them up through the programs, and so, we're hitting it from that angle. The other thing that we're doing is we're reaching out to, for example, Head Start programs, because we have children, the students in the child development. So, letting them know, hey, you can come and get your four-year degree. And the next thing, like we just talked about today, is we really want to reach out to our Customs and Border Patrol agents, and to our police academies, and to these different sectors. So, to answer your question, we've started a Phase One, and the Phase Two, definitely upping those recruitment efforts.
So, you're, you're going out there to, to the news medias and, and doing interviews and doing all that?
Absolutely.
Have you, have you thought about maybe newspaper and all that as well? It's everything.
It's all over, yeah.
They, they've done a really good job saturating the media, and we have pretty much an every-other-week blitz that we've been doing so far. So, certainly, I really have to commend the folks in marketing, Dr. Arisola, Dr. Rodriguez Tijerina, they've really been pushing it in our different media outlets.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since this is very much a leadership program, have you thought in terms of who's some leaders within the community you might approach and ask them if they can be addressing the, the classes that can, can be, if you would, would be able to call on them so that they can provide their experience, they can provide part of their background, they can provide, how is it that they ended up being in that kind of a position which identifies as, as a leader position? Have you done that, or do you, have you approached some of these key, let me put it this way, key citizens within, within our community?
Well, I first want to thank you for volunteering. No, sorry, that's an excellent, and actually, that is, that is part of our, yeah. Dr. A, no, don't come to me, don't come to me with a good idea. But that is part of our plan with our Leadership Summit. So, we definitely want to have one as, so, put it this way, we take in a new class every, every long semester. So, prior to every long semester, we're going to have our leadership kind of summits, and definitely have speakers. So, kind of the plan that we have is looking at the students that we're taking in, looking at the fields they're going into. We want to put them in the room, but people who will eventually be able to give them jobs are nobody. So, we kind of want to get them exposed. So, we have a lot of finance, we're going to have finance people there, education, we'll want the people. So, but I do thank you for volunteering, can't wait to see you at our first session. No, but, no. I just tease you unless you accept. All right.
Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Yes, about a few years ago, I talked to Dr. Marcella, and I introduced her to, to start working with the elementary students. And it's very important to work with the elementary. And also, like you say, you bring in these students in there, do you talk to the parent? And the parents are very happy to be involved in the case, you know, that, in case that, to help them out too, to keep the student in school. It's good to have all these programs, to have, what, I mean, six, you know, but you've got to put, you've got to get out there in the community. I mean, coming in here and telling us this is fine, but going out there, because I do work in the community a lot, that's why I know a lot of these kids and everything, because I work with kids. And I work with adolescents, and I work with adults. So, in a way, I always say, include the parent, even because in Laredo, you're going to find out that a lot of the parents is single-parent. So, a lot of this is wishful thinking, but we can make it real.
No, absolutely. And those are definitely things we'll keep in mind. In fact, we met with marketing today, and we talked about some of the marketing materials that we're generating. And when we, we did this, you know, and I, he gave me some really good feedback, and, and we talked about, how do we make this so the parents can see it as something attractive for their children? Because we think, yeah, like you said, they're adults, but there's also some with the young, the young students. So, yeah, certainly, absolutely. Other question?
Congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. On that, Dr. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina sent out a letter to all the legislators that voted on the bill to go ahead and allow community colleges to go ahead and offer more degrees. And two legislators have talked to me about it, they were happy to receive the letter and that they're willing to continue helping us. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, I, I understand that community colleges, which presumably they identify us as such, are limited to no more than three bachelor's degrees, is that correct?
Well, now with the bill that was passed, it's up to five.
I see, thank you.
So, we're on two, right?
Yes.
And we're going to work on three more.
I see. Excellent, thank you.
But, thank you. Thank you, Judge. Dr. Arisola? Any other comments on that?
None of that.
No.
Okay. So, the next item is Health and Safety Operations Center update, Dr. David Arisola.
Thank you. I, I know that's a tough act to follow, I should have probably gone first. You know, I have to, you know, bring, bring the house back down with safety. But just a quick update, we're constantly asked about how we're doing in regards to handling the pandemic here on campus. Now that we have all our students back, now that we have our faculty back, you know, much like we saw in the city, we did experience a, a little bit of a surge, if anything, in activity, not so much in the number of cases. We did get a lot of contacts, and people are reporting exposure, people are reporting symptoms, so on and so forth. But I'm happy to say that that is done, that is over with for now. So, a, as of today, the numbers here at the college are, and they're just zero and four. That means we have zero employees right now who are active with COVID. So, no employees are positive right now. And only four students are reporting positive across the campus. So, we do ask them to report, and our faculty and our employees have been very good about participating in our, in our efforts to keep the campus safe, right? The other new initiative that just started this month is we, we've hired a C and D team, a cleaning and disinfecting team. So, we're working with LITA, using some of the HIRF money to hire, well, we wanted to bring in about 20 individuals for custodial support. Where their focus would be just cleaning and disinfecting every classroom, all the high-traffic areas, so on and so forth. What we're having, we're experiencing a little bit of, of an issue is finding people who want to work, right? I'm, I'm sure that, that you are aware of that, that, the new pandemic, as they call it, right? We've also done a couple of vaccine drives. We did, you see the flyer for the one at the South Campus. We had one here at Fort Mac a week prior to that, at the Kason. And we were able to, in between the Fort Mac Campus and the South Campus, and all four days, we vaccinated 22 people in those, in those four days. Again, my tongue kind of low, but if we want to look at that on the bright side, we always say that we save, we potentially saved 22 lives in, in those four days, right? Last board meeting, we had our safety folks provide an update on Campus Shield. The implementation of that started today. So, as of today, people, we sent out a mass email to our employees to start downloading the app, and we'll, we'll start, we'll begin using that for reporting symptoms. Again, with COVID, they can use it to request services. For example, if a student is not feeling safe walking to the car, they can use the app to call a campus police officer to walk into the car, jump their battery, so on and so forth. So, we, we have, it's a lot of ways that we're getting, we're using that app, but that started today. We've rolled it out to our employees. We're going to do some training sessions for employees in the next week, and we will do the same thing for students as well, right? That's the end of my update. But, and thank you, and I'll leave, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Dr. Arisola, and thank you, Dr. Guerrero, as well. Next item is 11B Enrollment Update, Dr. Fred Solis.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members. Fred Solis, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment for the Record. Tonight's presentation is to bring you up to speed in terms of what the enrollment outcome was for the fall of 2020, or 21, rather. First of all, the fall schedule was comprised of a combination of type of courses. We had 43% of the courses that were offered face-to-face, and this was distributed across both campuses. 54% of the courses were offered in a combination of either online or in hybrid format. The hybrid format consists of that portion of the class that's offered online with a portion of the class that's offered face-to-face. And then, about 3% of the courses were offered as video conferencing courses, and this was specifically sent to dual-credit students. So, our teachers from this campus are teaching to the dual-credit students that are in their respective high school campuses. Another highlight of the fall 2021 enrollment is that, thanks to the wisdom in, in, of the board, we were able to implement the debt forgiveness and tuition waiver assistance for the fall 2021 semester. So, what's been the outcome of all these courses that are being offered and the debt forgiveness and tuition waiver assistance? Well, a little over 750 accounts were cleared totaling close to $350,000. This is, this is the result of the debt forgiveness component. Thank you to the board for doing that. Additionally, the, the fall tuition waiver impacted over 5,500, 5,900 students, and our preliminary numbers is we waived about $3.2 million in tuition, which is what allowed many of the students to return or come to campus for the first time. And so, again, thank you to the board for, for that as well. Our overall enrollment grew by 7% overall compared to last year, and so, we're on the trend, upward trend now. Our growth occurred, and this is most notable because our growth occurred in our non-dual student category, which, and that grew by 13.5%. You know, that was a challenge, and so, hopefully, this is a permanent turnaround that we'll continue to see with all the recruitment efforts that are happening. Both the semester credit hours and contact hours also grew by 9% in the non-dual student category. And the reason this is important, because this is the population of students that pay the tuition and fees and so forth. And so, again, it's, it's quite refreshing to see that, that spiraling down that we were experiencing has all of a sudden now stopped. So, what's coming up? We do have the Fall Second Start Mini-Master that will be starting on October the 18th, and the classes will run till December the 16th. These are 15 academic courses that are currently available or on the schedule. They're all offered online, and the, and the duration will be for eight weeks. Additionally, we will begin our Spring 2022 registration right around the corner in November the 1st. And I do want to announce to the board that the same committee that came up with the tuition waiver proposal is going to meet again for a possible proposal for the Spring 2022 Tuition Waiver Plan. And so, we'll be coming to, with that plan to the board in October. And so, I'm open for any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Great job. Congratulations.
Been a team effort from the whole campus.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone. Next item we have is Recruitment Update, Dr. Diana Ortiz.
Okay, good evening, Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Arisola, Laredo College Leadership, Educators, and Staff. My name is Dr. Diana Ortiz, and I'm the Associate Dean of Strategic Recruitment. Today, I'm going to share with you just a little bit of information regarding what we've been doing in reference to the recruitment efforts and our teams. I'm going to try to speed it up, because I'd love to share all the information, but I'm going to pass through some slides just to showcase some highlights about what we've been doing since I took on the position as the Associate Dean. First of all, some of the focus that we've had while we've been transitioning out into the school systems, because they all started in August, but we had an amazing blitz for all of September, is we are focusing on the Laredo College synergy that we has as a culture, looking at first-time freshmen, which is typical of the non-dual student. But since we have these captivated audiences of students, it's very purposeful, they're coming in so we could see them, we're also informing them at that moment that we want them to bring in their families, their brothers, their sisters, that have been displaced as a result of the pandemic. So, I let them know that So, I let them know that we're going to be showcasing the program regarding what Laredo College is offering, but at the end, we say, "We want you to come in, but we want you to talk to your parents, your families, and know that they can be upskilled, reskilled, or learn a new skill utilizing our Continuing Ed and Workforce programs." Then, one of the things that we talked about in earlier, Board Member Ramos, you mentioned some of the things that this conference was showcasing. We start off our presentations by highlighting the middle-section bullets, which is that Laredo College is open to new horizons. We're being flexible today more than ever before because of the way that things have happened and shifted due to the pandemic. That we at Laredo College are empathetic with our students and their situations because so many people have been impacted in different ways. Some unfortunately even seen family members pass or get very ill as a result of the pandemic, and then the open lines of communication. So, we're showcasing all that information. Then, I introduced the team, and I showcased them. Every school has their own lead recruiter, but we're traveling as a team. So, the schools, as we're talking to everybody, they know that they can refer to all three of them. Each school, like for example, here, Heveronville, the lead recruiter is Eric. For Bruni, the lead recruiter is Gómez. And for Zapata, it's Jackie. Of course, we have our lead recruiters for the Laredo ISD and UISD as well. But, we started virtual office hours and Zoom appointments, of which, after our presentation at LBJ, we have 18 Zoom appointments already scheduled for students that we've been marketing to. We also have a Meet Your Recruiter QR code, so they find out a little bit about general information, where they graduated from, so on and so forth. And then, in order for us to be very, very strong in presenting a good message to our prospective audiences, our team so far has been receiving professional development in all these areas. So, to date, every single area you see here, from website management to marketing, the LinkedIn Learning, personal branding, we've gone out to the Learning Center, we've met with Continuing Ed. So, we're trying to not be the expert in these areas, but have enough information when we're out there that we can showcase the college, not as just a recruitment team, not just as, but not as a recruitment team that is just trying to bring somebody in, but showcasing all of the services that we have at the college. Also, traveling with us this September was the LEAPs Division, Ms. Claudia Juárez. She's the Coordinator. Ms. Suzanne Ramírez, she was promoting donor relations and the Lamar Bernie Vergara Trust. And we did have one session where the Dual Associate Dean, Mr. Hernández, came along with us. And when we're introducing ourselves, we introduce the entire team, but then we introduce our supporting team. So, it's not only us doing the recruitment, but it's an entire village of people. So far, the Strategic Recruitment Timeline has been as such. For July and August, I shared this last time, we had a phone blitz where we called 687 people, and 187 were captured. Our September Blitz for all of the schools, we hit every single school at UISD and LISD, plus Zapata, plus Heveron, plus Bruni. And we impacted and saw face-to-face 1,516 students, 42 administrators, and all of them heard that we wanted them as first-time freshmen, but we want their parents and their families that have been displaced as a result of the pandemic. So, we're very proud of the efforts. And when you all were asking earlier if the promotions for the Bachelor's Program, every single one of those students in our presentation heard about the Bachelor's Program, about the great nursing program we have, about the TRIO services that are available, about the LEAPs Program, the Alternative Donor Relations Programs, and Financial Aid Drive. So, we're trying to encompass a huge capsule of opportunities for the students that we're tackling in September. October, we are going to have, excuse me?
I have a question on that.
Chair recognizes Mr. Duncan.
Yes, ma'am, and that's very good that you're talking to students and also targeting either their parents or their brothers, sisters. Are we targeting any of the programs that, like Ms. Cortez, just like, you know, Dr. Adesola just mentioned, the Driving Program, that we could maybe, maybe the father might not, you know, might not want to take, but we'll have those types of, are we targeting also those?
Absolutely. We focus one whole slide, which covers all the different programs. We highlight the HSSP, the CDL, the Culinary Arts, the Early Childhood Development, the Cosmetology, the Electrician Journeyman, the, there's only like a few pictures because you can only say so much, but you kind of just put the hook out there so they can get, and now, so at the schools, we're doing this, but in November, we're going to have Workforce and Continuing Education Fairs, where we bring in those people to the schools. In January, we're going to promote the Allied Health Programs. February, we're going to have application and advising drives. In March, we're going to look at the CTE pathways in the high schools. So, for example, if you're in a Training and Education Pathway, we want to bring them in to Ms. Juárez's Education and Training Program here for Early Childhood Development. If you're in a Culinary Arts, we want you to know that we have a Culinary Arts. So, we're looking at that, and then, I'm not going to go through all this, but I do want to share with you some pictures of us. This was us in Heveronville. This is us meeting with the administrators in Heveronville and talking to them about how we want it to be very, a very solid foundation that is really capitalizing on the opportunity population, not the most motivated, not the ones that are getting all the recognition, but that opportunity of students that if they don't come to see you, that we're going to see them. Here, you have the students. This was us at Bruni. At Zapata, dealing with the welding students. That these are all seniors in that program, and we were letting them know, "This is a perfect example of that pathway." These are welding students to say, "We have a program at Laredo College that can continue that process." Then, okay, right here, we were just dealing with college prep students, and we had some Zoom calls. Cigaroa, we were out at Cigaroa. Alexander High School. We, I'm very proud of showcasing the Laredo College emblems and the information we have there, being supported by dual enrollment, of course, promoting all areas. As you could see at the bottom, the LEAPs Program, talking to people, promoting their mentorship program. And then, all in all, these are some of the numbers that are actual numbers of people that we communicated with at every single school, including the administrators. And this was for the September Blitz. Upcoming, we have October Blitz. We have 13 sessions scheduled for application and financial aid drives. We're teaming up with TAMIU to provide these services. We will be out at the schools starting Saturday at United High School. Then, on Monday, we're going to be at Nixon. On Tuesday, we're going to be at LBJ. On Wednesday, we're going to be at Cigaroa. The following Monday, we're going to be at TAMIU, and we just have a slew of activities. So, I'm not going to go through everything, but just know that we've been working really hard for the college. The recruitment team has been working just very, very hard at trying to get the word out. We're using our marketing department and promoting some of the services that we have and what we've been doing. The reception has been amazing, and I can tell you that just yesterday, we're telling everybody to let them help us, let us help them become Palominos, but just yesterday, at our presentation yesterday, I'm going to share with you this quote. And somebody, the teacher that we presented to texted this to me, and she ended by saying, "Our students will start applying for LC tomorrow. Thank you very much for an amazing and eye-opening presentation. My last class is here, and your team is doing a magnificent job. I was there for the first three sessions, and I had to leave to prepare for this today. Thanks, Dr. Ortiz, and we will see you on the 27th." And that was Ms. Olga Rodríguez with United South High School.
Well, I think we should thank you too, because I am very, very impressed. Excuse me for interrupting.
Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
But, I mean, it is impressive, and we certainly, and I know that speaking behalf of all of us, we compliment, we congratulate, and we certainly wish you continued success. That's an impressive presentation. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, thank you, Judge. And I will tell you that this does not happen alone. I want to really, really thank Dr. Garza for allowing her team, the LEAPs Department, the Donor Relations, Ms. Pompa, allowing Suzanne to come out, Ms. Andrea López, who is allowing, you know, and affording us the opportunity to showcase Mr. Aguilar and his team to, to work as a, as a true first step for so many people. I share it in my presentations. I said, "I'm a product of Laredo College, and I'm proud." And I'm also a product of TAMIU, and I'm extra proud of that. And then, I've earned my PhD as a result, and I'm a first-time gen. So, I share that. And then, I share the whole team, and I say, "How many of you here have started at LC?" And everybody raises their hand, that are administrators, that are teachers. So, I think just trying to make that connection and knowing that, I will tell you, several people are like, "Wow, Laredo College is doing so much, all these programs." And then, I share privately with our recruiters. I said, "Guys, this is, this is the awareness that, you know, we've always had these great opportunities and programs in place." So, I hope that you all are proud of what we're doing. The recruitment team has been doing an amazing job, and I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity and the support from Dr. Solis and everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. The Chair recognizes Ms. Maris.
I just want to, I'm here, I'm sitting here just enthralled, and as Judge Martinez pointed out, I think between the dramatic and impressive energy that you carry, as well as Dr. Guerrero, I think this thing is going to just take off and go into leaps and bounds because you two are just the perfect match for the positions that you hold, and so, very excited about you and your whole team, about everything you do. I said, "The energy, you've got, that energy created the synergy, I think, to motivate all of us."
Thank you, thank you so much. And I will share with you that I did tell her, I did tell Ms. Guerrero, I said, "If you didn't know how many students were impacted, I know, and it was 1,549 that we just finished seeing in September." So, the goal is to do this next year again. So, you know, September, you're doing general and so on and so forth, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
One of the things that we learned at the conference was, in conversation with the Board of Trustees, was that the Aspen Institute provides an Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence. And one of our fellow trustees, he's not from here, but he said, "Why apply for prizes like that? Why, why, why do we have to tell anybody that we're good? This is what we have to do. We have to showcase ourselves." And so, with that in mind, we come together and we represent what we're all putting together as our piece of the puzzle, right? And so, I, my answer to that, to that board member was, "Why not? Why can't we showcase what we are, who we are, and what we're doing for our students, right? Because student success is ultimately our number-one goal." And so, I look forward to, one of my goals for the board is to apply for the Aspen Prize for Community College Experience. I mean, the Excellence Award is what we need to showcase, that we are good, and we're getting better, and we're going to be number-one continuously. So, really, that's what I'm looking forward to. And I commend Dr. Ortiz as a fellow friend and as a fellow colleague at UISD. I've seen the work that she does in the CIT Department and also with Kate, and so, I commend her on a job well done and continued working for a successful endeavor for our college. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chair recognizes Mr. Duncan.
Yeah, just echoing a little, a little bit of those things, yeah. Those are, I just think the work that you guys are doing is great. Maybe, maybe we ourselves could maybe even go with, with them whenever they're going to, to our high schools. We all graduated here from Laredo, so I'm a proud Panther, be more than happy to help you. If you guys are out there recruiting students, I'll be more than happy. I attended LC as my first college, and I went to TAMIU. So, I'll be more than happy to help, and I know all of us have, have graduated from one of the high schools here in Laredo. So, maybe reach out to even us, you know, as trustees.
That's exactly the connection that's needed, because I can tell you, when we start and we set the tone with the culture and how we're, we're being empathetic and all that, that's great, and we start promoting all the programs. But, we end it with, you know, "We want you to reach out to us so we can help you become a Laredo College Palomino." And then, we say, "But, we want you to be the first-time freshman, but we want you to have your parents," so on and so forth. And the point is, that connection, when you make that connection, even within our own team, they're, they just say, just making that little comment changes the dynamics of how people feel. So, I would...
And, and it shows, "Oh, you went here. You walked these halls," you know. Judge Martin, you know, all of us went there, and even I, I encourage our VPs
Absolutely.
to go, especially if they graduated from even, you know, the school, the high schools from here in Laredo, you know, help them, you know, go out there because, especially you all hold very high prestigious positions, so they could understand that it's like, "I could be there. I could do it as well."
Well, our November events, when I talked about the Laredo College Fairs, and I didn't want to go into too much detail, but we're going to focus on workforce programs, but I'm not going to, we, I talked to Mr. Hernández, and we're going to focus on the workforce programs that need some recruitment numbers, not the ones that are already very full or have waiting lists. And we talked to Continuing Ed because I want to have them there, because if you have the captive audience of their student, of their son or daughter, we can have Continuing Ed there and Adult Education. And I had one lady at LBJ tell me, she goes, "Ma'am, yo ya tengo, yo ya soy jefa. Yo ya tengo mi negocio, pero no tengo mi GED." I said, "Well, le podemos ayudar?" And so, you know...
It just is, we put pressure to you guys on, on, on bringing up numbers and doing, put pressure on us as well. Call us up. Call our Board President, our VP, our Judge, you know, call myself, call Dr. Carranza and say, "Hey, I'm going to your campus. Do you want to join us?" You know, and put pressure on us as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Let me just say this.
Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Everybody's from here, but not quite.
It's true.
Let me finish, please. Thank you very much. The thing is that I come from the poorest school district, and we didn't get any of these things. We created the Robin Hood. Ah, you don't know where I come from, do you? But, it is very important to deal with the parents. It's good right now to enlighten everybody, but at the end, there better be a name product, because there are going to be a lot of discouragements. But, the thing is to keep going forward. You can give all the rhetoric you want, but at the end, it's a good. Did the student get ahead? Okay, I'll cut it short. I don't like to go all this jumping.
You're done? Okay, so I want to go to the next item. Okay? Next item is 11D Financial Aid Update. Mr. Stephen Aguilar.
Okay. Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Adesola, dear esteemed colleagues, Stephen Aguilar, Financial Aid and Veterans Director for the Record. I just want to continue, I just want to quickly just address what Dr. Carranza just stated. That's where we come in, the financial aid. Financial aid, Dr. Carranza, we have been helping, like what you said, all the poor or the poorest in Laredo, helping them getting the money to come to this institution to attain a certificate program, an associate's program, and now that we have bachelors, even better. So, we're going to, we're going to work together in alliance with Dr. Ortiz, with Strategic Recruitment, to make sure that this continues. I am very happy and very excited with this new venture, having Dr. Ortiz on board, helping us with our recruitment, pushing that financial aid, because financial aid is the stepping stone for every student out there. Because financial aid is the stepping stone for every student out there. Without financial aid, the students would not come to this institution. And I see it every year. Every year that we see graduating students, we have some of those students. And financial aid, for me, I'm a first-generation student, aside from being a veteran, you know, it helped me. So I'm a firm believer that financial aid is a stepping stone. So pushing financial aid, aside from admissions, having great programs, because I'm going to tell you, LCC has one of the best programs out there. And we're the number college for that reason, and that's why our students want to come here. So my job, the Financial Aid Director and Veterans Director, is to make sure that we provide those opportunities, that money, those finances for those students. And having a recruitment team, because this is going to be a team effort, to go out there to the high schools, and like you said, Mr. Donquixote, to go out there, and even yourself, go in there and recruit. I think that's a great idea. But let me just go to my presentation. You know, aside from the recruitment efforts that is done in the high schools, we also have recruitment efforts here at our institution, our campus. Every academic year is called, we call it the Financial Aid Blitz, the Financial Aid FAFSA Blitz. And as you notice, in your, where you're sitting down, you see these flyers and tents that we put across the campus, not only across the campus, but also to the high schools. We talk to the high schools, we partner with dual enrollment, we partner with different entities to make sure that, to deliver this message. The message is, hey, October is right around the corner. October 1 kicks off the Financial Aid Recruitment Event. What do I mean by that? What do the students need? The students need to fill out a FAFSA, the FAFSA or the TASFA. The FAFSA, the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, is for those US and legal residents, right? The TASFA is for DACA and documented students. A lot of schools don't offer that. And guess what? We here at LCC, we focus on all those students. Why? Because those are the students that come from the poorest communities around Laredo. So we, our focus is to bring that financial aid support for them to be successful. So October 1 kicks off the 2022-23 FAFSA application drive. And that is going to be, we're going to have events in both campuses. There are going to be, starting October 1, this October 1, we're going to have a big kickoff event, and I invite you all to come by. I know that in those type of events, I know Ms. Ramos, and I'm going to mention Ms. Ramos, because Ms. Ramos, every time that we had those type of events, she would go. She would go out there, and "Steven, what are you guys doing?" And we would walk her around, and she would see our operations, she would see how the staff, and not only financial aid staff, because this is a joint effort, all the enrollment, management, the offices always participate. And I'm going to tell you that, and Ms. Ramos can see, you see the students and parents being out there, very happy that somebody's helping them fill out a FAFSA or a TASFA, because it is a daunting process. The FAFSA do not make it easy. The FAFSA do not make it easy. So it's our job in the Financial Aid Office to train our staff, to train our recruiters, to train trio programs, to train everybody that goes out there in the community, to learn how to fill out a FAFSA, but how to be human, how to be understandable of the different needs. So we're going to have these events starting October 1. They go from October 1 all the way to January. And those events are set, again, for students and parents. What are we doing? We're having marketing. I know that, Mr. Donquixote, you talk about, what else are we doing? Marketing is a big part. So I just want to thank Mr. Obed in the Marketing Department. They have been great. They have been helping us with flyers, promos. We're going to have interviews coming up next week. So it's going to be a great success. These events usually bring out, bring to our institution enrollment. Because without financial aid, Dr. Fred talked about that increase in enrollment. With that increase in enrollment, it was a team effort. But guess what? That financial aid, that CARES money, that HERPS money, that CARISA money, all of those money has helped us, the institution, bring that enrollment up. And help, at the end of the day, is help that student and that family be successful. So let me just say, the FAFSA, the FAFSA is a yearly application that the students have to apply. Every academic year, starting October 1, the parents have to, the parents of the students have to apply. It requires income. It requires different things that we're going to provide that service. And for the TASFA students, for those students that they are left behind, other institutions, LCC, we don't leave them behind. What we do is that we encourage the TASFA application, which is a state application for students that can get aid, but from the state, not from the federal, because as you know, the federal, they do not grant monies for those type of students. But Laredo College, we have that. We have scholarships, and those applications open. So what happens with the FAFSA? Once a FAFSA is applied, the FAFSA covers the, for example, here, the 2023 is going to cover the fall 2022, winter semester 2022, spring 2023, May semester, summer 1 and summer 2 of 2023. So it is always ahead. So that's why we're partnering up with recruitment, because our seniors right now, our dual enrollment seniors, regular seniors, people in the community that want to come to school and they want to start in the fall, they need to do it as soon as possible. Why? Because funds are limited. The federal funds, we get enough funding for students, but state funding, scholarships, they're very limited. Okay, so what are we doing for social media? So we're doing, like I said, we're, if you look at our Facebook page, if you look at Instagram, we're doing radio, we're doing Canvas. We have sent flyers, posters, TV ads, rotating ads, emails, texts. So we have done an array of media and marketing and FAFSA Blitz campaigns for all our students and community at large. And of course, we have partnered with LEAP's, dual enrollment for some of these tasks. And now that Dr. Ortiz is onboard, we're partnering with recruitment. And I just put a couple of pictures. These are the posts on Facebook that LCC has posted. We have also a timeline. We tell the students exactly when to apply, when to turn in documents, when to come to us for any type of assistance. Now, this is another TV ads that are around campus here in the south. Any student, any parent that stop by is going to see it, and they're going to be able to know that we have these type of events coming up, and they could come and participate. And these are other pictures, and like I said, I sent all my, some of my work studies. I said, "Make sure that you put all those tents everywhere," so they could, you know, so the students could know, and that you guys are aware of this. So we're, you know, very happy to invite anyone to our coming event, starting tomorrow, October 1. You're more than welcome to stop by. And so you could see that, you know, hopefully we'll have a good turnout. And again, we're going to go from October all the way to January and continue to the month of March. So, any questions?
Chair recognizes Mr. Donquixote.
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. Mr. Aguilar, I commend the job that you do. Every person that you've reached out to that I actually, Mr. Aguilar, I don't know this person. They called me. Can you help? I get the email, I get the text, I get everything saying, they helped me so much. They provided me with more money than I was expecting. So your staff and yourself, I want to commend you for the work that you do. You guys go above and beyond to help these kids, or even, you know, individuals that are wanting to come back.
Yes.
You know, you always find a way to help them, even though they were here 10 years ago, 15 years ago. I commend you, because especially one of my buddies from elementary just enrolled for, I think it's electrician, and he called me crying, telling me after 20-some years, he came back, and he's so happy. And I know you had a lot to do with that. And I want to thank you, because it's those inspirations. And he posts LC every day in his Facebook of what he's doing. And I'm happy that he's happy coming back, even though, and he puts there, "It's never too late. It's never too late." And it's what you, what everybody in your all's team is doing, and everybody at Laredo College is doing, to bring these people and trying to say, like he says, "It's never too late." So I want to thank you for the work that you do.
Mr. Donquixote, thank you so much. And we, you know, I know that you have approached me, and we have talked, and I'm going to tell you that it's an honor, like, working for, this is a very noble job, assisting and helping, because, you know, if I didn't believe in this, I wouldn't be in this. I would not be here. My goal was to go to the DEA. I was on my way to do that after I got out of the military and got my degrees. But working in, as a work study, I started as a work study, working in financial aid, and financial aid helped me. And the DEA, of course, helped me as well. So I know that we do, we make a difference every day. But we make a difference because of your leadership. Your leadership, I know that Dr. Rodriguez, Digenini is not here, Dr. Fred Solis, and now Andrea Lopez, you know, they support our mission, you know, because I go to them. Every time I have a problem, I go to them. Hey, this is what I need. This is what needs to be happening. And every time I really don't hear a "no," I always hear, "Okay, let's see what we can do. Let's make it better." And at the end of the day, it's not for us, and everybody knows this. It's for the student. It's for that student that is going to walk that line, get a certificate program, get now an associate's or a bachelor's degree, and they're going to better their lives. Because it happened to me, and it could, and it happens. We change lives every day. So I think that, you know, again, thank you for your support, because if it wasn't for you guys, your vision, you know, we would not be here. So that, on behalf of the students, my team, we thank you, because it's not only me. It's my team. My team is what makes it happen every day.
Kudos, kudos, kudos.
Definitely.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ramos.
And Mr. Aguilar.
We're not done yet.
Not done yet. Yes, ma'am.
No, I just want to tell you, thank you for always working with the kids, because I too also recommend individuals to go to your office and have them talk to you, and you're readily available, and so is your staff. I mean, they're very welcoming. But I'm so glad that you're capitalizing on the requirement that we now have, that all high school seniors have to fill out a FAFSA.
Exactly, yes.
And I would like just one statement to explain to the board how that's coming up new. And it wasn't done before, but of course, it was something that the students had to do, but now all seniors, so.
Yes, of course. No, it's a state mandate. It was through a Senate bill. I can't recall the Senate bill, the number, but it was, it came through the state. It's a mandate that now all the high school seniors in the state of Texas must complete the FAFSA application. The only loophole there is that they don't talk about the TASFA. And as you know, TASFA students, we have, that TASFA is for undocumented and DACA student. Now, we're going to push that as well. I know that that's not part of that mandate, but we're going to do that for our students here, because we do have a growing population under those circumstances. So what we're doing, Ms. Ramos, aside from partnering, that's why Dr. Ortiz is here, and that's why we're going to partner with her, because she has very well knowledge of the different, the LISD, UISD, and has the support that we need to go in there and help the students. Because at the end of the day, we're there to support and not working with TAMIU. I am hoping that we, it goes through, that this vision goes through, and help the ISDs manage this task. Because I'm going to tell you, it's a daunting task, having all seniors apply and complete, because what the mandate said is that, not only do you have to apply, there's going to be a portal where the counselors go in there and check, okay, United High School, Martin High School, you know, 50 apply, but out of 50, 10 completed. So it's going to take, it's going to take a big partnership between the ISDs, our institution, TAMIU, and everybody, because we're going to be partners to make sure that they complete this task. And now that they have to complete it, we're going to be there. LCC is going to be at the front center of this task, to provide that assistance to our ISDs, to LISD and UISD.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Congratulations, and keep up the great work. The next item is, we have is a Laredo College Food Services Update. Mr. Cesar Vela.
Cesar Vela, VP Finance for the Record. Just to give the board an update on the food services. We reopened campus to face-to-face. Our priority at this time was to bring back some of the services. We did approach, we had individual contracts with three providers. We approached all three providers. Out of the three, only one returned, Tacopalenque. But thanks to the efforts of Ms. Nonamaker and Ms. Beatriz at the South Campus, we were able to bring in another vendor right now that is currently, has set shop at the South Campus. They started operations this week. And also, we were able to bring back Chick-fil-A under new management, a different franchisee was able to provide the services. So we have Chick-fil-A at the South Campus and at the main campus at this time. They are providing services from 8:00 in the morning to 2:00 in the afternoon. And that is breakfast here at the main campus, being provided by Tacopalenque, lunch, also by Tacopalenque and Chick-fil-A. And at the South Campus, we currently have Eduardo's providing breakfast and lunch, and also Chick-fil-A providing lunch. Now, internally, the team has discussed the issuing out a request for proposals. However, based on the history that we had with requests for proposals, we have not been very successful. Since we reopened the Kason Center, we've had two vendors. One vendor came onboard and performed services for about two years. So they completed two out of the five-year that they had agreed to. We then issued another RFP, and we had the same situation with the vendor that we had to cancel the contract. Right now, the recommendation that we have, that we're working on, is to do a request for offers. And essentially, it is something similar to a request for proposal, but this allows us to work with multiple suppliers, and we bring them onboard, and they provide suggestions as to how we could offer the services. So the plan right now is to actually do an invitation to seek potential suppliers and vendors that are interested. And that is, again, to give an opportunity to restaurants or here within the community to participate. And again, it is something that we've done in the past. When we closed down the Kason for renovations, we went through this process, and we actually were able to secure four vendors that provided services for about a year and a half to two years at the T-30 building. So again, right now, we are planning, again, to do that, issue out an invitation to seek offers from multiple suppliers. Here at the Kason Center, we have room to accommodate up to five suppliers. The challenge with the design of the Kason Center revolves around the kitchen area and the storage. And that's why it's important for us to work with the vendors, bring them in, and work and see if we can come up with a solution to be able to provide variety to our students and staff. I know that right now, it's taken us a month to bring those vendors back onboard, and that is because obviously, there's paperwork involved. We did request them to submit their permits, their insurance. So finally, all that has come in, and they have started operations. But as we have started that, through the marketing office, we've been advertising that we now are offering these services through the Kason Center and the Billy Hall Center. But we're already getting calls from staff members and students, and say, "Hey, we want this other vendor to come onboard. They have, you guys have it at the South. Come, bring him over to the Kason." And yes, we've had meetings with those vendors, but again, there are some challenges there. And the way the RFO works is that it allows us to work with the vendors and see if we can find a solution to be able to provide those services. So again, we are working on sending an invitation through our website and through the local newspaper. And we'll conduct a meeting with anyone that's interested and see, to see if we can bring in additional vendors at this time. But again, the important thing is that we do have the services already for students and staff right now.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Maris.
Thank you. Mr. Vela, just in case that, you know, if you're going through a list, obviously, of, you know, a potential, like you say, supply- like you say, suppliers from just the community, thinking, okay, there's this, you know, company here, whatever, Wendy's or whatever it is, you know, let's reach out to them. But in case you don't, what's the process if, if we know someone that we can tell them, look, call Mr. Vela, call the, you know, uh, and, and, and give them your information so they can then get in, in conversation with you?
They can contact, uh, uh, the purchasing office, and through the purchasing office, we'll schedule meetings with them. But again, as, uh, when we send out that invitation, we'll, we'll, we'll send it out. If, if we get information of vendors that are interested, and we can, they can forward that information to our purchasing office. As soon as we're ready to send out the invitation, we'll send them a personal invitation to, to participate.
And second, uh, food trucks. You know, you know, people ask also, you know, as, as part of a diversification, I guess, and, you know, the food trucks, allowing food trucks once or twice or three times a week here to come to and give the, the students and faculty, everybody, uh, more choices.
Yes. And, and that's also a possibility through this process. Uh, we've had a food truck at the south campus, and we re- reached out to that, uh, restaurant, but unfortunately, they did not have the food truck anymore. Uh, the one, the current provider that's at the south campus, actually, that's how we approached it, uh, they had a food truck. Uh, but again, after having meetings and, 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 uh, looking at the facilities and the traffic, they decided to set shop at the, at the, at the Billy Hall Center. But, but again, yes, that's an option, and we'll discuss that through the RFO.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, just really quick.
Chair recognizes Mr. Angel.
Uh, maybe reach out, because I know I had a conversation with Ms. Elizondo about, uh, what is?
Vegetarian?
The vegan, vegan options, yes.
Yeah, just, I mean, you know, that maybe you could reach out to her, seeing if maybe she possibly has some vendors that would wanna join this invitation that you wanna go ahead and, 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 and give out. Maybe reach out to her and ask her if she has maybe certain vendors that.
Yeah, and, 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 uh, if we have, if we get that information, we'll reach out to those vendors. Uh, we've also, with the current vendors, we've also discussed maybe offering some, some options that, that they could accommodate. Uh, and again, right now, they're on a trial basis, they're, they're still exploring the menu. Uh, but yes, uh, the, again, like I mentioned, one of the, uh, pluses of going through an RFO is that we can work with the vendors on those things.
That's what I got. Thank you, Madam Chair.
There's an awesome hot dog truck.
Mr. Aguilar. Chair recognizes Mr. Aguilar.
Just a, a, a quick, a correction, quick update, uh, modification. The ISDs, LISD, UASD, they are pushing the FAFSA and TASFA in the opt-in option. Okay, I just wanted to mention that because I did mention that it was only focused on the FAFSA, it's not. And also, we're doing 13 events from 8 to 8, uh, in, in the different surrounding areas. And the events here are gonna be from 8 to 7 every Tuesday and Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Any other questions for Mr. Vela? Thank you, Mr. Vela.
Thank you, Mr. Vela.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is the President's Report. Dr. Arizola, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, nothing to report other than what's in your pen.
Thank you, Dr. Arizola. Uh, the next item is next meeting date will be Thursday, October 28th at 6:00 PM, Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. I have a motion to adjourn by Ms. Matis and a second from Mr. Angel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, for staying late.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all, appreciate you.